It's eleven o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Marisio, roll call, please.
Commissioner Viscaro?
Here.
Commissioner Joseph?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Stuyvesant is not here yet. Mayor Svechn?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Amy, would you like to lead us in pledge, please?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, for the record, I just want to say that we normally, we had decided last year that in December we were not gonna have a meeting. We had gone through our summer without a pause. However, there was a mistake made and something wasn't filed, so we added this special zoning meeting. And just as a reminder, next December, we will not be having a meeting. I hope we don't need to add anything. Okay. Marisio, do you want to play the opening statement, please? Or do you want to start with the zoning?
We didn't have the opening statement scheduled because most of it is already--
All right, then I'll just do the zoning. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening's, this morning's agenda has two zoning applications. In these matters, the commission sits in a quasi-judicial capacity. The decision of whether or not to approve a zoning variance is not a popularity contest, but must be based upon substantial competent evidence as it is presented today. If you intend to provide testimony on any zoning application, you must be sworn in by the city clerk, and you should also fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. We will first hear from the city staff and then from the applicant. After this, I will allow anyone from the audience who has been sworn in to provide testimony. The zoning applicant has the right to cross-examine any witness and for rebuttal. Please make your comments concisely. Mr. City Clerk, please read your introductory zoning statement.
In accordance with the LDRs of the City of Sunny Isles speech, all items to be heard today have been legally advertised in the newspaper, notices have been mailed, and posted on the properties. All persons wishing to speak at this hearing, please raise your right arm. And this is for both applications. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. So, the first item, or first application, is 3A, the request of 18401 Collins, excuse me, 18401 Developers LLC for a site plan modification and approval of payment agreement terms for the Bentley residences.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Vice Mayor.
Amy, I'm so sorry. Just, I need to ask, are there any ex-party communications for this application only?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And the nature of the conversations or communication?
The height of the, the height of, and the financing of, oh, no, just, this is just the height, so.
Just the height?
Yes, the height. Same.
Same here. And for me, no?
No. Thank you.
Okay, so this is the zoning hearing for application PZ 2023-14 regarding the Bentley Residences Development Project. The site plan for the Bentley Residences was, which is located at 18401 Collins Avenue, was approved by the City Commission in 2021, and this application has two requests. The first is a site plan modification to reduce the overall building height by thirty-one feet, and that height reduction is the result of reducing interior ceiling heights. This will not affect the approved floor area or the approved number of dwelling units. The second request is approval of the terms for the applicant's payment agreement for previously approved bonuses and TDRs, and this is going to be in the form of a promissory note. The twenty twenty, in 2021, the applicant's request for a payment agreement for the approved bonuses and TDRs was approved, but the terms of the payment agreement must be approved by the commission, and that's what's before you this morning. Those terms are being presented to you in the form of the promissory note, which provides that the applicant may pay the total amount due for the bonuses and TDRs along with accrued interest within twenty-six, within sixty days of issuance of the first TCO. The applied interest rate will be prime plus half a percent, and the applicant is subject to making annual interest payments. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be available for any questions.
Great. Thank you. Is the applicant gonna come up, or, all right, Commissioner Viscaro?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Lama?
No questions.
No questions.
Sorry, Vice Mayor Lama. Okay. Take motion, then. Oh, we don't have any public speakers? Okay.
No public speakers.
I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item, please.
Thank you. Next item is 3B, request of ACA Gas for a site plan modification to the mobile gas station project located at 18300 Collins Avenue. And are there any ex-party communications for this?
No.
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 Not on my part.
No? Okay. Thank you.
This is the zoning hearing for application PZ 2023-15 regarding the mobile gas station at 18300 Collins Avenue, which is next to Publix. The gas station was originally constructed in nineteen sixty-three and has been in continual operation since then. Today, the applicant is proposing several improvements for your consideration. This includes closing one of the driveway curb cuts onto 183rd Street, specifically the one closest to Publix. Parking stalls and landscaped areas will be installed in the place of the driveway. The canvas car wash canopy, the blue and yellow one that we know, will be replaced with the trellis, with the new trellis structure. And the interior of the convenience store structure is going to be remodeled to remove the old auto repair shop and be replaced with additional convenience store space. I've had a sneak peek at the applicant's presentation. They have a lot of great photos and renderings, so I'm gonna allow them to explain the improvements a little bit further, but I'll be available for any questions after their presentation.
Great. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. Lauren Khan with Bills &amp; Sundberg Offices at fourteen fifty Brickell Avenue. I'm here on behalf of ACA Gas LLC. That's the applicant or the tenant of this property. I'm also joined by my colleague, Brian Adler, as well as the project architect, Gabriel Chavaria. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here. I know this is a special meeting, and we appreciate the time. I want to be respectful of your time, so I'm gonna try and give as abbreviated a presentation as I can. If there are questions, we are available. I think, you know, one of the most important things I wanted to point out is that we are changing, the changes that we are making are permitted by code, and what we're really providing here is an updated, improved, modernized site to be more in keeping with the aesthetics of the city. So you can see here, there's a rendering on the first page. Let me just make sure I know how this works. Okay, so this is the site as it is today. As you could, as Ms. Canales presented, sorry, so short. So as Ms. Canales presented, this was in existence prior to the incorporation of the city. It was approved under Miami-Dade County, and there is the site of a gas station, an automotive service station, and a car wash right now. The car wash and the gas station, oh, sorry, as well as a convenience store. The first three uses that I mentioned, which are the gas station, the automotive service, and the car wash are not permitted uses in the BO District, which is where this is located. Those uses are not permitted anywhere in the City of Sunny Isles other than the TCO, the Town Center District. So this is located on one hundred and eighty-third Street. The Town Center District is south of one hundred and seventy-second Street. So this is the northernmost gas station that the city has. This is what it looks like today. And so what we're proposing is to reallocate the existing floor area uses. We're gonna keep the exact same envelope. We're not increasing the floor area, the total floor area, but we are eliminating the automotive service use, which is not permitted. We are reducing the car wash use, and we are also increasing the floor area dedicated to the convenience store. So, but, but all within the same envelope, right? So, the reduction in the legal non-conforming uses brings the property closer to conformance with today's zoning code. So what we're proposing is a decrease in the legal non-conforming uses and an increase in the legal conforming uses. We're also gonna be eliminating the curb cut. Right now, this is, this is the proposed site plan. Right now, there's a second curb cut on one hundred and eighty-third Street, which, on this slide, it's on the left, the top left, where you see parking spaces now. There's an existing curb cut there. We're replacing that with landscape area as well as parking spaces. So this is the existing site plan. You can see the curb cut exists there today. This is the proposed site plan, and the dark green areas are new landscape areas. So you're gaining landscape. Currently, the site has about seventeen and a half percent landscape open space. Code requires twenty. We're providing twenty-two percent. So this is an illustration of the existing site plan. You can see in the top left, there's a car, an automotive service shop. That entire use is being eliminated, and it's gonna be replaced with an expanded convenience store. Again, that convenience store is a permitted use in this zoning district right now, so the expansion allows for, it, it, it brings the, the site plan more into conformance with what's permitted. This is the landscape plan. The additional trees that are being added are all native trees. It includes five buttonwood trees, and this is sort of the rendering, a conceptual rendering of the site of what we have proposed. So, staff's recommendation went through specifically how we comply with each of these different requirements for the redevelopment of this property. That, that is part of your package. That's part of your application package. It serves as substantial competent evidence, as you discussed in the opening of the hearing. And if you have any specific questions about compliance with any of those, we're here to answer those questions. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Questions from, from the DAS? Yes, Commissioner Joseph, go ahead.
So, how are you today?
Good. Thank you.
So I have a question regarding your fuel tanks. When is the last time that those fuel tanks were changed?
So, I don't have the date of when they were changed, but I know that in two thousand nine, they were relined with parabeam fabric coated epoxy resin. They were inspected by the county in September of this past year, and they complied entirely. And the Florida Department of Environmental Protection is also monitoring them, and they passed an inspection which included testing the relining, and that was in May of two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. So, for insurance purposes, your insurance company regarding the warranty on the tanks, they're charging you a premium for the age of the tanks, or not?
A premium for the, for the what?
For the age, regarding the age of the tanks.
I, I don't know the answer for, to that for sure. I would assume likely.
Right. So we could receive that answer?
We could. We represent the applicant who's leasing it. I, I assume they probably have a separate insurance policy, and we could probably--
Commissioner Joseph, do you need that right now to make--
Well, I'm--
--for your decision, or is that something you want to get later on?
Well, I'm trying to understand whether there's any city liability regarding the age of the tanks.
Okay. I want to ask--
There would not be.
Okay, so--
There would be no liability for the city's standpoint.
Okay.
And, and again, the, the tanks, especially, not especially because it wouldn't necessarily be relevant, but the, the tanks themselves are not part of the criteria or the standards for this particular item?
No, I understand that, but I was just questioning, you know, if there happened to be a catastrophic leak, are it's our water that would be contaminated?
Right, but--
Even though there's insurance coverage, it would be the city that would be totally affected?
It would be affected, but we wouldn't be liable.
Yeah, but I'm not discussing liability. I'm talking about, you know, that, the ramifications for city residents. That's what I'm--
Great, and to prevent--
Especially when it comes to the tanks, we, it's petroleum distribution holding and so is heavily regulated, and we're actually preempted with regards to that. It's heavily regulated by the state and by the federal government, so we don't really have a say in that.
No, I understand, but I'm not preempted from asking the question.
No, just to the extent that it's not relevant to the item that's before you for purposes of approval or disapproval.
I didn't say that was. I was asking the question.
Okay. So do you have the answer to that?
So, two things. I, I, I understand the concern, and we want to provide you as much comfort as we can. Number one, there are monitoring wells that would detect a leak in the case of a leak.
Yes.
And secondly, the owner of the property is here and may be able to clarify a little bit.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, how are you?
Good. So, my name is Siggi Shakad. I'm a resident of Sunny Isles. I live here at Aquila Mansions. My father is the owner of the property. He also is a resident of Sunny Isles. We do have insurance--
Yes.
--on the tanks. We've had insurance from the day he's owned it, which, I don't know, is more than twenty-plus years ago. We've always had insurance, and counsel is right, the state does regulate those tanks, and they're constantly regulating and checking on those tanks.
Yeah.
So hopefully that answers your question.
Okay.
To tell you the exact premium, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I didn't mean it for, you know, any, anything negative regarding other, other than the safety of city water.
Totally understand that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Stuyvesant? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just wanted to know two things. How long would this project take for completion? And then, it's more of a comment, you know, I, I don't foresee any friction with, you know, existing traffic patterns. I mean, we have a school around there. It's a very, you know, busy street, shall we say. So I, I just want you to be mindful if you're, you know, working. I don't know if the staging is gonna have some sort of, you know, cause any interruption with traffic patterns, but just, I don't think so. I mean, I spoke with staff. Don't foresee anything, but please, you know, if it does, be mindful, yeah.
Yeah. My name is Gabriel Chavaria. I'm the architect of record that submit the plans. Mostly of, of the renovation that we plan to do in the building are interior renovations. So the, the majority of that, it's interior. There are a separate structure that is prefabricated and installed on top of the car wash, and the exterior work is mostly landscape and resurface of the entire flooring, asphalt flooring of the, of the gas station. So we believe that can be, even, even without stopping operation, most of the work can be done.
Okay, perfect, yeah. And, and when would the work start, once you get--
The, the plan is to start permit right away. I mean, we are working right now in the construction documents. Hopefully you guys approve. It's gonna be done very soon. And then the permit process, and, and I think it's gonna be within a year, the, in operations.
Yeah. And, and you're still continuing operations on the gas station, or are you gonna close down the service?
There is no specific plans for that. Most probably, they need to shut down for a little bit, but the majority of the work can be done without stopping because it's in the back of the building. And then, one, once it's connected, then in some point, it needs to be, maybe discontinued the service for, for a few weeks, I believe.
Okay.
But the idea is to try to continue working during operation and work. Most probably, the, the car wash is--
Still be open while you're working, and then perhaps you might have to shut down for a couple of weeks?
Shut down partial. Let's say that the car wash is not in operation for some wa, some time because heavy trucks and it's gonna be dirt. But the, the gas station itself, I think, is gonna continue working during, during the construction of the interior of the work.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Viscaro?
Hi. I had a question about the curb cuts. On, along 183rd, there's two. You're gonna be closing one, right?
Right.
So, is it possible to, to close both?
This has been discussed to, to see if it's possible. We have, the, the lot is not, not as big. We have maneuvering for the truck that brings the gas to the gas station, and, and we discussed this with the owner to see if we can cut more and, and leave more space for landscape. But the problem is, they use the exits there when they, when they go out and for maneuvering, so we don't have the option to close more than one.
Understood. Okay, so here, here's my, my thought. It's, I mean, I'm, first of all, I mean, I, I support this project. I think, you know, you're beautifying it, and it's gonna be a nicer thing, so. But, but regarding this, you understand the school is right, it's basically behind it. It's a high pedestrian intersection, and it's, it's been a problematic intersection for us in other ways with, with the CVS and all of this. So if you need it for the, the, the delivery of the gas, which makes sense, maybe you can block it, have something temporary that you can remove when you, so maybe you don't put landscaping, but you, something that you can remove when the, when the gas gets delivered, because I'm willing to bet, even though I haven't seen it, that you probably have kids cutting through the, through the gas station. You have the scooters, things. We're really trying, as, as a city, to be more focused on pedestrian safety and children's safety, and I'm thinking that if you do that, that would contribute to, to better conditions for the kids.
Your concern is over the 183 or Collins?
Correct. Correct. I know you have to have an entrance to, you know, to, and you have two on Collins, right?
That's only an exit because the 183rd doesn't let us turn to the, to Collins Avenue, right? It's only going to the other direction.
All right, towards the school.
But we, we can explore. That's--
It's just something to think about. And again, I understand if it can't be permanent, or maybe you open it on the weekends or, or whatever, but just, I'm, I'm, you know, we have an opportunity here to really think a little bit more broadly, and we, we are trying to focus on pedestrian safety, so I'll just give you that as something to consider.
We can explore that possibility, yes, absolutely.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. I have a few questions, please. You had mentioned the prefab portion for the car wash. What is that?
Yes. What we, we plan to, to use is, it's a, it's an aluminum structure that can be prefabricated outside and assembled there. This is something that, I mean, it's not concrete. It's not built in, on-site. It's prefabricated and installed there.
So does that add to the square footage?
It's part of the square footage. It's a reduction of the cover that they already have for the car wash. So we are using a smaller structure than they have right now.
Okay. And so, this had come before us many years before, ago. And so I had spoke with our city attorney and with Ms. Canales about why was it in the past, this was not considered, and what has changed. And so I wanted to just, on the record, be able to flush that out, so we have a really good understanding of what has changed, if anything, or if it's just our opinion has changed. So, the, the seating that's inside, the, the chairs and the tables?
We have a waiting area. Remember that this is a hand car wash. It's not an automatic one.
No, 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 not the outside one. Inside the convenience--
Inside as well. I mean, there's a small place that people can wait there and drink a coffee. That's the, the purpose of the, it's, it's not a restaurant. It's not intended to be any restaurant or something like that. It's a convenience store, and they have a window in that side that has a couple of chairs that people can wait and see their car being washed.
So you're gonna eliminate the chairs that are outside? The ones that, right now, sort of the plastic chairs that are out there?
Well, that's gonna be, of course, it's gonna be another, another space that people can wait there. I mean, it's not gonna be a, a specific design to, to, to have a, like a serving food or anything like that. It's, everything that we have as a waiting area is a waiting area designed to people waiting for their cars.
So do you have a, a rendering of the outside waiting area?
This, this is it here. So two things I just want to clarify. When we were talking about the prefab structure, we were talking about the canopy.
I see.
What's there right now is a, is a canvas.
I see. Okay, okay.
Okay. And then the second question you had, were you speaking about as to the site as a whole, how we weren't sure how we were gonna proceed in, in the past? Was that the question?
In the past, the, the reservation or, or the, the challenges, and I'll let the city attorney chime in as well, was that because of the, the use changing, and because they, you were no longer using the automotive portion of it--
Right.
Now it's been many, many years since it's been used, that in effect, that disqualifies the gas station as, as a, as a use. So that was a question that I just wanted to get clarification on, because it was quite a while ago, and this does, and this is a, a different site plan.
Right.
So, I wanted to just let the city attorney clarify that, so the rest of the commission can hear it.
Yes, Mayor. So, in two thousand eighteen, there was another project. I, I can't speak too much on the particulars of that particular application, but it's seemingly, the proposed changes were a lot more significant. I think they were talking about thirty-two hundred square feet. The city attorney at the time had a pine with counsel for the applicant that it was a change of use under, under section two sixty-five eighty. In two thousand twenty-one, the city took a different interpretation of that and found that to be erroneous. We have independently looked at that. I have independently looked at the code, worked with staff, and agree as well that the two thousand eighteen opinion was not consistent with the code. And, not to get into the weeds, but it, the non-conforming use here is essentially an automobile service station, which is consistent with, which is comprised of the gas station, the convenience store, and the car wash. So I think what happened back in two thousand eighteen is it was being compartmentalized within the structure. So, for example, if in the structure, if that interpretation were true, you essentially could extend the floor of the convenience area afoot by adding a couple more tiles, and you'd negate the ability to have a gas station altogether. So the code requires a change in the floor area where here it's not, and the building stays the same. It's just the internal improvements. The other aspect of the opinion was that under two sixty-five eighty-three, that somehow because it was a non-conforming use, that the building was non-conforming. That's not the case. The building is conforming. The site, the setbacks are correct. Everything else is fine. So it's not the actual use itself that renders a building non-conforming. So that, that argument wasn't even relevant to the inquiry. This was looked at, like I said, in two thousand twenty-one, and those errors or different interpretation came about saying that this was permissible. It was not a change of use, and we find that to be consistent and with the code, and this is not a change of use.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I wanted the rest of the commission to hear. And then, one more thing, very similar to what Commissioner Viscaro was saying, was the, the school traffic. You know, this is very obvious to us because we live here. Across the street from the gas station is an area where many students wait for their parents, literally on the sidewalk. And so my first thought was, if I'm gonna be picking up my kids and they're waiting on the sidewalk, I'm gonna say, just go into the gas station. They have now chairs and, and tables, and just go buy yourself a sandwich and just sit there and wait for me. How are you going to manage that? Because we do have that issue, unfortunately, with Publix, where Publix is, has a large amount of people coming in, and they're, they're concerned because it's, it's creating this sort of bottleneck for them, and they expect us to kind of help them with that. But the reality is, is that I want to, on the record, to say, you know, this, this may be a problem for you all once you create the additional parking and now the seating inside. So do you have, have you considered that?
Not sure if I understand correctly what, what is the question.
So, you are, the, the, the site is almost, you know, it's almost across the street from a school, and the school has many students that often wait for their parents--
Right.
--on one hundred and eighty-third Street--
Right.
--adjacent to the, the RK Plaza. So they're waiting on the other side of the street. Any day, today, you can go and check it out. You'll see at least twenty, thirty kids there. My concern is, is that already, because I drive around there every single morning, there are parents that drop off in that gas station to drop off their kids. So now with adding additional parking, which I appreciate because I agree with Commissioner Viscaro, it's gonna beautify, and the fact that it closes off, it's great, and now adding seating inside, you're in essence creating an additional opportunity for school pickup and drop off. That may be a hindrance to you all, you know, as a business. I just want to make sure that you know that and that you have, you know, I'm, I'm sensing you did not consider that.
In some way, it brings more, more business to, to the, to the convenience store. I mean, I, I don't see a downside on that.
Okay. That's, that's--
This is a business, business question more than a design, but it's, it's designed, of course, to attract more people to--
Well, no, my, my point is, is that, that it, it could be a lot more people that are just coming in and buying-- that are just coming in and buying a candy bar. I, I'm not, you know, it's your business. I'm not trying to tell you how to run your business. I'm just saying that I don't want the tenant to come back in a year and a half to the city and say, what are you all doing about the fact that now we have all these parents parking there and picking up their kids? That's, that's what I meant. Commissioner?
Yeah, I think, I think it's gonna be a lot more organized.
Okay.
The, the place is designed now with the handicap park in the right place, the walkways. The parking organized a lot better. We have stations to charge electric cars. I mean, it's, it's a lot more organized, so I think it's gonna work more.
They can have the same issue also with people trying to go to the beach. At the end of the day, it's a private property. You guys can tow whoever goes there and it's not part of your business. So I think they will be able to, to manage, yeah.
Agreed, and I just wanted to note that there is an expansion of the convenience store use intentionally. That's something that they wanted to increase. So I think to some extent, some of that traffic will be welcome.
Good, okay. I just wanted to further the record because often CVS has to close down because of that traffic. So, okay, all right. Are there any other questions from the commission? Do we have any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
All right, then I'll take a motion.
Motion.
I need a second?
Second, I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so this, although this is a zoning meeting, Commissioner Stuyvesant wanted to add a resolution. So please go ahead.
Yeah, it basically was to give the direction to city manager to enter in an agreement with Freebie to offer the free car ride service. I have a few talking points that I wanted to share with you guys. But basically, with the Better Business Network reconfiguration, we basically lost our internal stops in Sunny Isles. When we had a town hall in Gateway, people were very upset about it. And even the county is recommending Freebie or some kind of ride service. It was part of the presentation. Also, our neighbor communities like Aventura, Bell Harbor, Bay Harbor, North Miami, and North Miami Beach, they all offer Freebie or some kind of a similar service, including small towns like Biscayne Park, West Miami, and El Portal. They offer Freebie for their residents. It's interesting that El Portal is doing it because their budget is only a little bit over three million dollars a year for the city. Also, another thing that is important about Freebie, and I actually really like it, is that the drivers are employees of the company and they try to hire local people. So they function also like little ambassadors of like the businesses, the places. Like they can tell people, especially people that are coming from outside, tourists, where to go, et cetera. And so it's always kind of the same driver, so you can get that connection and feel safe with them. I know it's gonna require a budget amendment because we didn't budget. However, we did budget for this last year, and last year was impossible to get the service for one reason or the other. So I think that is a good service that we can offer to our people. The low-income people and especially the elderly, they got really affected with the bus business network change from the county. So I wanted you guys to consider giving the direction to our city manager to start this conversation, which they haven't had for a while. So I know that they are surprising here, so I just wanted to know what you guys think.
Okay.
Mayor, before we continue, I need to read the title of the resolution to the record.
Oh, sure, of course. I wasn't expecting a resolution, so go ahead.
So for A is a resolution directing the city manager to do all things necessary to enter into an agreement with B Free, doing business as Freebie for on-demand transportation services.
Great, okay. Yes, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, could I go first? Because I got it.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so, what? Do we have public speakers?
Do you all want to have the discussion first?
No, we're doing discussion first, yeah.
Okay, 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 all right. So I, I think that there is a, there is an issue that we need to address with, with this. And obviously, the county changing their, their bus stop patterns, eliminating internal bus stops. So my thing is that I'm not sure if Freebie is the right solution. Just because I don't think they have enough cars, I think that we should perhaps look at other options. And then if we start looking at a cost-benefit analysis too, you know, should we start thinking of perhaps buying another bus? If, you know, Freebie, I think I spoke with Stan or someone, at one point, a budget was presented to us and it was like two-hundred-and-eighty thousand per, per year. So my question is, should we buy a, a bus that is dedicated to taking people to the bus stops, the county bus stops on Collins Avenue, and perhaps other uses that are more immediate? And then besides this, obviously, there's other issues that we could address. I know that we're still looking at the, the transportation study. But I, I've received calls and, and people approached me stating that they would like for our shuttle service to take them to Walmart in Highlanddale Beach and to other places near our city that I think are crucial for some of these people to be able to, to go there and to be able to be, to have transportation to these places. So yes, we, we should, you know, look at for some sort of solution, especially, you know, because the county did what they did. But maybe we should be looking at perhaps other options. Not, not Freebie, perhaps we could buy a new bus. We could look at Uber. I know that they have some sort of option where you could contract them for these types of services. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
And then I have to go. Thank you.
Yes, it's understandable. We weren't meant to have a meeting in December, so please go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
So city man, Mr. City Manager, I know Susan is not here today, but she had alternative solutions that she had mentioned in the past regarding picking up where the county bus is no longer stopping. So are you familiar with those and can you enlighten us?
We're still going through the transportation study and looking at all available options.
Okay, so basically, vote, passing any type of resolution today on Freebie would be putting the cart before the horse.
Okay, Commissioner Viscar?
I, I echo a lot of what Commissioner Lama said. I think that we, we just need more data. Like I'm, I'm not even really sure what the, I know that there were changes to the county bus. My understanding is that we're no longer taking county buses, day county buses are no longer going into Broward, and that's affecting some of that. And us being right on the border, that, that impacts our residents. Our transportation study made it very clear that the Walmart route and that Highlanddale reach was important. But, and, but now we don't, now that the county changed the routes, that changes the data that we were using to reconfigure our own routes with our internal buses. And so, yeah, I, I think before we spend resources and time or even formally considering the company, that we should get our data straight. And, and then if it's needed, then we look at it. But if we can solve the problem in a better way, and maybe there isn't, but I don't know that. But we won't know that until we have the data. So I'd rather wait for the, for us to finish looking at all the new information together first.
Okay, Commissioner Stuyvesant, did you want to add or do you want to have a public speaker first?
No, no, I wanted to add that.
Go ahead.
We lost all the internal stops from the buses, going all the directions, not only Broward. Also, I agree with more buses. I have no problem with that. That's not part of the conversation right now. I believe we should try it. We already approved it for last year. Last year, for some reason, they were not hired. So we, I believe we should try it. And the problem that the people have right now is now, started the day that it changed the routes of the buses. So, and again, we are in pause, waiting for the consultant and the study to tell us what to do. We are continuing, now listening to the people of their needs, their needs of yesterday, their needs of today, and their needs of tomorrow. More data is always good. I agree a hundred percent with that. But it's not gonna solve the issue, the people that they lost their stops already. So we do have the money. We just approved getting over two-point-seven million that we were not considering before. That was a 3A. And this is gonna be similar to the cost of one party, one evening, that we do here in Sunny Isles. So I don't understand why we have to delay and stop until somebody, some consultant that comes from God knows where is telling us, oh, yes, do it. And if the consultant says, oh, maybe no, don't do it, then what we're gonna tell to the people? Oh, we are not doing it because the consultant say not. So I, it is frustrating not to be us, the one making decisions, giving directions by always allowing somebody coming from somewhere with whatever data they are bringing to tell us what to do. That is the same sentiment that I have with the Parent Recreation Master Plan. So I believe we should pass this, start this service as of right now. And if it doesn't work, then we can eliminate it. So, but let's help the people right now that they lost completely their stops. They don't have the service anymore. And, and until we reroute our shuttle to get to Walmart in Highlanddale. I've been hearing the same thing from, when they say the Walmart, they say Walmart and the next shopping center. Because many people go there to the hair salon, to do laundry, whatever. So they lost all the stuff. That is something that we can right now solve with Freebie. They've been in conversations already, so we are start to, we, we are ready to start the service very soon. And, and, and the people don't deserve to be waiting until somebody comes and give us an opinion that might be against this.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like one more.
Would you like to add? Okay, go ahead.
So it was my understanding that when the county stopped their stops, that the city automatically picked up on, with our buses. Is that not true to? So do we have people now that are stranded, Stan? Because that we can't allow.
No, it's my understanding that the people can still get to where they need to go. They would just need to take some additional transfers from the bus.
Okay, but they have to walk further as well?
There would be some additional stops that they would have to take in order to get there.
So it was my understanding that our current shuttle buses were picking up those stops to move people along to the county buses. That's not true?
No, our current shuttle service still runs as it is.
Okay, so we need to then modify that. Because we have people now that are stranded that can't be stranded.
No, the people aren't stranded. They would just have to take an additional stop to get to where they need to go. And any alteration of our shuttle service would require additional study because it would affect our existing stops and shuttle service. So even a modification, adding an additional stop would have a ripple effect throughout the service.
Okay, so how many buses do we currently have?
I don't know. I couldn't tell you. I'd have to go back and look at it.
So do we have a spare bus?
We do not have a spare bus. We do not have drivers that would be able to add additional stops without studying the routes.
Okay, I, I just want to put it on the record that I am not for spent, the city spending continuing money on consultants. I haven't, as far as I've seen, we have not had a good experience with a lot of the consultants that we've had on, on different issues. I think, and I, I thought that Susan had said previously that she had alternative services to pick up on the, you know, the stops that the county had left unmanned. I thought actually, actually, maybe I misunderstood her. But I thought when the county stopped their routes, that our shuttles were picking them up. So there was no, you know, there was no stop in service.
Jerry, if I may to answer you, there was a stop in front of the Marion Towers.
Right, that's the one I'm also, I know that.
There is nothing in the inside. So we have people with very low mobility having to walk from the Marion Towers to Collins to get into the bus. And maybe for somebody like with a good health, that is a nice walk. But with the people with very low mobility, that is very hard.
Right.
Okay, so, so that's what I'm saying. My opinion, and that's what brought this, in this opportunity, now that we were gonna be meeting, is to start this service as soon as possible. If it doesn't work, like anything else, we can stop it at any moment. But maybe we see that we like it, and maybe we wanna even expand it. But let's help the people right now that they basically, basically got stranded with all the changes.
But I just want to say that I've gone to the same conferences that you've gone to, and I've been approached by the same Freebie person. And I don't see Freebie as being the answer to our problem. I believe that we need to expand our shuttle service.
We are not saying no about that. I'm okay with that as well. As much service as we can give to the people, we have to do that. Like, we owe them that. And, and I get a little bit frustrated when we're talking about money because we are very frugal so many times with so many other things. So now we are talking about a really, we can even say life and death issue for the people to try even to get to their doctors, okay? So please, you know, this is a service that we have to give to the people. I don't understand why is this even a discussion? And I, and I agree with you, Jerry, about the consultants. I'm sick and tired of waiting for somebody to tell us what to do. I was, when I, when I got elected, I was on the belief that we give the directions. That somebody has to give us the directions to, we, we just, to tell, yes, to those directions.
So let's do this.
Wait a second, let's, let me just get some clarification, one second. Because we're not gonna go back and forth, because this, this is not a regular commission meeting. So I am concerned that we do not have the same sort of participation, and especially since Commissioner Lama had to leave. Can I get clarification, Commissioner Stuyvesant? What exactly is the, the direction you want to give to the city manager? Because this says to enter into an agreement. What is the agreement? Where's the agreement?
Negotiate. I'm not telling them what is the agreement. That's something internal that they will do between them and Freebie and between the city manager. It's just to start that negotiation procedure at least. They know they have been in communication, it's in our package, that they've been giving their, a new, to have the service for seven days a week, twelve hours a day. So I know they are talking about pricing already. So it will be, I want to give in direction to start continuing those communications and start that service.
So, Mr. City Manager, have you stopped the communication?
No.
Okay, so just so I can get clarification, so that we are not going back and forth.
Have you started it?
One second, please. So are you in communication with Freebie right now? Are you looking at this as we speak?
Yes, we're looking at all options.
So does this resolution give you any additional direction than you're already?
Unless you want us to start the process immediately. But because we don't have any money budgeted, I would need approval from you to expend funds. And the estimated cost is about two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars a year that we're not budgeted.
Okay, all right.
And then we don't have other answers also regarding residents using it or visitors? I mean, there's a whole other issue that goes along with this.
I agree that I need more information, but I want to be respectful of people's time because I believe we do have public speakers.
We do.
Please, go ahead.
David Virgil?
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and Commission. My name is David Virgil. My address is 17500 North Bay Road, Sunny Isles Beach. I think Freebie is a very good idea in concept, but it depends on the number of cars and the demand at the time. For example, when the service began in North Miami Beach and in Aventura, buses, the cars will pick you up within ten minutes. Now it takes forty-five minutes to an hour to pick you up, depending on the time. And it's too long to wait. And with the new bus changes, a bus used to leave me right in front of my building. And now, I come from FOU's Biscayne Bay campus to Sunny Isles. Now a bus drops me off at the corner of 163rd and Collins Avenue. And I could choose either to walk a mile, wait fifteen to forty-five minutes for the other one hundred and still walk half a mile from, through Winston Towers, or wait for the next shuttle, since it's usually not in sync with my bus. So it's been like really more inconvenient. But I think it's a good idea to try Freebie, but I think it might cause problems over time. time, if the man gets high and there's only one car, or the whole city.
Thank you, thank you, do we have other public speakers?
Yes, Marina Berinster, so sorry.
Good morning, Miss Mayor, the commissioners, my name is Marina Berinstein, my address 19380 Collins Avenue, I'm here to address the issue of transportation. My community, the Ocean View, was directly affected as well by the change of public buses, because the Publix, the stop of the, of the, of the bus that was right in front of Heritage Park was eliminated, and the next closest stop is by Miami Juice, which is half a mile south, and the the one that's going north would be across the street. So, remember the bad, bad weather that we had a while ago, it would be almost impossible to get to that stop, especially in our community, we have many young people, we have elderly people, for whom that extra half a mile is a lot. We have inclement weather, or too hot, or too cold, many days in a year. I also want to, and and this is just because, Commissioner Viscar, you mentioned that you were not aware of what's going on, and this is, this is something that is on on top of elderly population that we have inside the city, that I know that they need the transportation. I want to make everybody aware that the county made it sound like the the community but shuttle should pick up the left, the 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 routes that were left, but the problem is the community shuttles also start late. I am talking about the the people, that students who need to get to schools early, for example, my son used to take public transportation in front of Heritage Park in order to commute to North Campus of Miami Dade College, which is now way more complicated, and he needs to get there at certain time, which is, at that time, the community shuttles are not running. People who needs to get to their jobs, they are not addressed by community shuttles, there is something that has to address that segment of the population and the the hours as well. So, I'm not sure whether Freebie would be addressing, since there are limited hours, but this is something that absolutely has to be covered, people need help, the shuttles are simply not running, I'm not even talking about the fact that the shuttles are running once in a blue moon, and you cannot really rely on them to to connect to the the connecting buses to other routes, it's just, we're left, we're left stranded, and the community of Ocean View, I, by my calculation, it would be 1,400 households, and and I see people standing at the stop still waiting for for the buses. Another thing that I think that Freebie would help us as residents, because there is a huge, huge issue of parking for residents. For example, this week, the the beautiful event of Winter Fest was was held in Gateway Park. As a resident of Ocean View, which is like the opposite side of the city, I tried to get there with the car, there was no parking, I had no choice, there was no parking there, there was no parking around, I had to drive all the way back home, park, and take Uber. And the situation is getting, and situation, I mean, we're getting more residents, we're getting more guests, I don't see, I mean, I'm not aware of any parking solutions coming by, if Freebie or any other service that would operate and and help residents would reduce cars, would reduce parking issues, hopefully that it's, well, riding effectively. Thank you so much.
Thank you, do we have any other speakers?
No ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to add something before, I'm assuming Commissioner Stuyvesant wanted to add as well?
No, no.
No, okay, so I I appreciate the speakers, especially since it's the middle of the day, so thank you for coming, thank you David for always coming, and I I personally don't have enough information, because I agree that we do have a problem, and I'm in conversations with the county, because my concern is that they took away a service that now we're, and they're taking our tax dollars, they took away the service, and now we're expected to add more tax dollars to cover for that service, it doesn't seem like the the smart thing to do, I think we need to work with getting that service back immediately, because getting a few cars isn't going to cure all of the issues that we have in the Ocean Reserve and and for others that are going earlier in the day. And and just as an example, I thought to myself, well, if if I was looking at this service for myself personally, then easily, I would be using one of the two cars to send my child to school in the morning, and it would lock up a good hour and a half of the of that time. So, we definitely have a problem, we should look at a solution, I propose that the city manager would be able to potentially, and with his agreement, come to us in January with a solution for this, perhaps it's adding bus routes, buying an additional bus, I agree with Vice Mayor Lama, that buying an additional bus is probably at this point must have, to Maria's point, there was no parking.
And expanding their time, their work operating hours.
A complete expansion, but much more so than than we had anticipated, given the the change in the bus routes. As of now, I just don't have enough information to to have either a yes or a no on this. So, okay, with that, because we're getting to 12 o'clock, you may add one more thing, and then I need a motion.
So, Mr. City Manager, I'm I'm happy to meet with you, and I would, I would like to actually set up a meeting to go over the number of buses that we have, the possibility of starting the routes earlier, and expanding the routes in order to cover the areas that have been eliminated.
Okay, so I need a motion for this item?
I need a motion.
Okay, I need a second. Okay, no second, the item dies. Okay, thank you everyone for coming out, see you in, oh, I I neglected to say Happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, we'll see you all in January.
Yes, happy holidays to everyone.